Good morning. I'd like to officially call this special meeting of Seneca County Border Commission's Board, would you please all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Commissioner Wagner to lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this chance to gather as community leaders. We have a difficult subject facing us this morning, and we ask for your guidance and direction.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stacy?
Here.
Commissioner Zoller?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
I'm here.
Good morning. As just a couple of points to note that we do have to record all of our sessions, that's how we do our minutes, so this is recorded after our Ken Majors is going to do the presentation this morning and take over the meeting at that point, but if and when you ask questions, maybe state, if you can, rather loudly, you may not get seen on the video, if you want to, come on up, okay? But just your name and affiliation, and that way we, because the recorder hopefully will get that picked up, and we'll obviously have our notes as well. If you have not signed in, please make sure you do that before you would depart, that sign achievement is in the back. Great.
All right. I want to thank you guys for coming out, we've got a great turnout today, this is exactly what I was hoping for, it was more than I could expect, and I'm humbled that you guys have come and paid attention to what our situation is. So, I'm going to get started on the presentation, I'm going to dim this light on this side so it's easier to see people. That's too much, just let me know. Once again, I'm Ken Majors, I'm the Seneca County EMS Director. I have a pretty long history in EMS, and a fire background, and also a registered nurse. So, knowing a little bit about what I'm talking about, I think is important, and I hope that you guys pay attention to what it is that I'm going to ask of you to do as community leaders. And really, there's a few things that we'll get right to, and we know that the situation is dire when it comes to manning our EMS units. In other words, the ambulances that serve your community. So it's important that we understand the severity of that, and we move forward with a plan to alleviate it, and that's what I'm here to talk about. So, I appreciate you guys having me at your meetings locally, and now we're going to get right to the meat of the matter, and we'll talk about it, and remember, before I even get started, that the ideas that I'm sharing with you are just that, they're ideas. The goal here is to get you guys, as leaders in the community and leaders in EMS, to discuss and help me, help us solve the problems that we have. With that, I'm going to get started. So, in the history that we have here in Seneca County, I know you guys have heard me say, since 1978, Seneca County and the local governments have had a collaborative agreement, that we work together to provide EMS to the villages and townships in Seneca County. So what's important to know is, the county provides equipment and infrastructure, that means all the ambulances, two goings down the road, that are blue and white and say "Seneca County EMS", and we're not even, all the stuff in them, trucks, the fuel, all the laws and legal stuff that keeps them compliant, including medical direction and protocol and all those things, that's what the county provides. What the local districts provide, that means the townships and villages, their task with providing us the manpower to do that. Without a two-person certified EMS crew in the back of that ambulance, it's just a blue and white truck. It needs two certified EMTs to be an ambulance. So our objective for today is to plot a course for the future. And we're not going to leave here with decisions, and we're not going to solve all the real problems today from this meeting, but what we're going to do, is we're going to recognize the situation, and I'm going to ask you a couple of questions that I think that we have to have these, and from that, then we'll have a, we'll have a little plan, course for the way we're going to go. So, manning has become a critical need, and that's evidenced by four out of seven squads being manned, about 50% of the time. The other 50% of the time, we've got half of our trucks out of service due to no manning. The out-of-service schedule that we've been providing for you since 2000, probably '99, I have a stack of them, it would be a couple filing cabinets full of them, but we've been doing this for a long time, making sure that everybody's aware of the situation. So, what we need to do today, or at least coming out of this meeting, is define an acceptable level of staffing. We need to know that a two-person certified crew is necessary at all times, and we need to report any out-of-service that we have. A certain amount of out-of-service can be expected in an all-volunteer situation, however, how much of that out-of-service time is acceptable? And as community leaders, we need to define that, that's a question for you. How much is too much? How much is okay, and how much is not acceptable? And then the last question is, when we have folks who refuse to report out-of-service to my office, what do I do about that? I need direction on that from the elected officials, from the leaders in the community, that if somebody says, "You're not getting my out-of-service, I'll let you know if we can't come when you dispatch us," is that okay to do? Because it's not okay with me. So I need that, I need that, those questions to answer. So, those are for food for thought for later, now I'll get into the meat of the matter. So, the objective that we're running through is, we're going to ensure that each one of you guys, and the elected officials of each township and village, understand their commitment and their responsibility towards the meeting of our ambulances. My objective is to promote the formation of joint ambulance districts, to improve communication, leadership, and understanding and involvement in EMS at the local level. If we do nothing more than organize and have meetings to discuss EMS, only EMS at a meeting, not a tag item on the agenda, but the actual topic of the meeting is EMS, like we're having today, I think if we do that once a month in joint ambulance districts, we will improve the EMS service for the citizens of Seneca County, because we will have a common goal at that point. So some of the suggestions we're staffing that we've come up with are multiple joint ambulance districts versus one big county ambulance district. And they both have their merits, but I'm going to try to persuade you towards the multiple joint ambulance districts due to something called span of control. Because we have a meeting this size, it would be very difficult to make a decision at the end of it. Everybody voting, and everybody talking, and all those things. If we have a meeting of about five to seven, more than nine members, we would be a lot more successful with leadership. What I'm speaking by that is, a joint ambulance district provides local control, it's a board consisting of one member from each of the townships and villages. They meet once a month to discuss scheduling, pay bills, compensate the members, handle any human resources matters, and talk about the manning responsibility that they have toward the EMS. This is an example of an existing joint ambulance district that we have right now in our county, that would be Bascom Joint Ambulance District, that encompasses Hopewell, Loudoun Townships, and the unincorporated village of Bascom. So, how that works, there's a board member, they're here today, and we appreciate you guys for coming. A board member from Hopewell Township, Loudoun Township, Bascom, and they have a fiscal officer. And what they do, they meet once a month, they review the schedule, they approve the schedule, they pay any bills that the district has had come in, they pay the memberships or compensate the membership, and they discuss personnel and any operational issues that they have. Meetings last about an hour maybe, and they talk about nothing but ambulance matters. So, suggestion that I had for that, the Attica, Madison, Reed Fire District already exists, so ADR Joint Ambulance District. It's just a simple paperwork matter, we can create the ADR ambulance district from one member from Attica Village, one member from Dennis, one member from Reed, and a fiscal officer, and their duties would be the same as the Bascom Joint Ambulance District Board is currently. And then we can take it one step further, and add Bloomville and Bloom Township to the ADR district, and you still have that board of five. Bloom and Bloom Township, Bloom Township and Bloomville would join that, and that would become, now this is just a spitball man there, the Southeastern Seneca Joint Ambulance District. Five-member board responsible for the personnel of two county squads. The Bloomville and Attica squad, the squads would stay right where they are, they wouldn't move, wouldn't change anything. The county will continue to provide all the things that we've provided for the past 35 years. The joint ambulance district board would maintain the scheduling personnel, and all the other stuff that we talked about, for 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage for two ambulances on the southeastern side of the city. Or, we can also look at something in the Pleasant, Greensprings, Adams area, that is the response area for Greenspring's ambulance. It may not be exact, but it's pretty close. So Pleasant, Greensprings, and Adams forms the Board of the Northeastern Seneca Ambulance District, hypothetical name, just came up with it. Board consisting of one member from Adams, Pleasant, and the village of Greensprings, and then the fiscal officer to complete that, and if we want to make it at least five to seven, we add CPO and Republic. If we do that, CPO and Republic, one in Greensprings, one in Republic, the Northeastern Seneca Ambulance District has a span of control of five folks, the one fiscal officer. We can also think of some things, like what if Liberty Township and the village of Betsville join an existing district? Also, the township of Jackson, Jackson Township, Liberty Township and the village of Betsville could possibly join the existing Bascom Joint Ambulance District. I wasn't sure if that could happen, so I made sure I asked the question of the prosecutor to make sure that you can do that, and it is possible for townships and villages to join an existing district, provided that that joint district allows it. They join into the current village, if there is any, and 1.2 is what the current village is for the Bascom Joint Ambulance District, the newly formed district would have to be renamed. And interestingly enough, I asked this question as well, if Jackson wanted to join the existing district of Bascom Joint, part of that, that village could go to pay their contract that they have with the city of Houghton. So like I said at the beginning of this, I'm throwing out ideas, I want you guys to digest them, and then we're going to talk about them. So, Seneca County EMS will be providing ambulance service with three or four joint ambulance districts within Seneca County, and that is the definition of shared service. I know we've all heard that in political rumblings that you hear out there, shared service. Seneca County will continue to provide EMS equipment, medical oversight, protocols, medical direction, all the things that keep us compliant, the big ones, medical expenses, fuel, billing, training, the big ones. It costs about $1,000 to train an EMT now, so we have, we need more, but we have a lot. So, joint ambulance districts, what this would do, the county would still supply the EMS director, would be my position, position that I hold. Through reorganization of the department, we would have an EMS assistant director that will be primarily responsible for clerical and billing, but also have a responsibility towards EMS operations and response. Director would attend all of those direct, all of those joint district meetings. We have four meetings a month, I'd be at all of those meetings. District squad coordinators, that we have a bunch of them in the room today, and I appreciate that, they would attend their district meeting. It'll actually decrease the number of meetings that all of us have to attend, and increase the efficiency by making those meetings mean more. So, the district squad coordinator would also attend the meeting that I have once a month, and the meeting that you guys have once a month. That would streamline the leadership team at the local level, and also provide a more workable span of control for local matters as well as councilmen. So cost of funding. The way this currently works, and it really is dependent upon how big we want to go, if you want to do a county-wide ambulance district, or if you want to do the smaller ones, depends on what you need. Currently, Bascom Joint Ambulance District has a 1.2 mil property tax levy that generates enough funding to compensate their volunteers at $3.50 an hour, 24 hours a day. A lot of folks find that hard to believe, that people would be willing to come out and put their time in for that, but they have pretty close to 30 volunteers, and people call them all the time in the waiting room. So, there is, there is need for this. It's a nominal fee, I'll explain what a nominal fee is, it's not minimum wage, it's not wage an hour. Nominal fee is defined by the Department of Labor in 2005, it defines what you can compensate a volunteer, what level you can do that at. They use the example of a high school custodian acting as a volunteer sports coach, they don't use the volunteer fireman or volunteer EMT model, but it means the same thing. The nominal fee would be, if they do not exceed 20% of what that school would otherwise pay to hire a full-time coach, meaning 20% of what you would pay to hire a full-time EMT, less than that is what you can pay your EMT for compensation as a volunteer. And make no mistake, they're still volunteers, they're not employees of the township, they're not employees of the district, they're volunteers to the community. What that would provide is local EMS crew at the basic EMT level. If anybody wants to be anything more than that, that's great, and we'll certainly support them in their endeavor, but basic EMTs are what we need, and we need them 24 hours a day. The county's continued financial commitment to Seneca County EMS maintains the Seneca County Echo Unit. At this point, that's 12 hours a day, from eight in the morning until eight at night. In the future, I see that being a 24-hour-a-day, part-time position for paramedics, and the county has committed to the success of that program, and it's been five years, and we're working very well. The county EMS budget currently is $500,000, roughly, give or take, usually a little less than that. This year, it was a little more than that, because we made a couple of big purchases. Approximately $300,000 of that comes from EMS billing, which is steadily decreasing every year since 2009, since Medicaid and Medicare have done their affordable healthcare. Seneca County doesn't want any of the funds that I'm talking about. We don't want to see it, they don't want to come, we don't want them to come through the auditor's office. Any funding that you create in a joint ambulance district would go directly back to that district, and go back to the volunteers in the form of compensation. It's not accounted for by the county, it's not county money, it's your money. Goes back to the community in the, in the form of compensation to the volunteer. The cost, if we do it the way we have it right now, meaning that the districts that we have formed, like Adams, Pleasant, and Greensprings, those are the people that are covered by Greenspring Squad. You cover all Adams Township, most of Pleasant Township, and Greenspring Village. These are the villages that it would require to create $60,000 annually for personnel compensation. $60,000 annually, wouldn't do 3.50 an hour, it would do $3 an hour. Because of quick and dirty math, and the worst better than the way I was trying to do it. Doesn't come out with a bunch of cents and stuff, just speed of numbers. So, if Bloom and Bloomville do this, it'd be almost 2 mil to create 60,000 mil. So, what those numbers equal to the $100,000 property owner is, these are the numbers. And honestly, you know, I'm asking you this, if this is something that's feasible for you, and I'm trying to give you ideas, the emotion on the ideas to process, and decide whether it's something you want to take to your voters or not. But there is a way that you can do it without having to do that, joining an existing district is an example of that. So if larger districts are created, they contain more than one ambulance, the cost would be spread over a larger area, and maybe cheaper to the taxpayer. There's no way that I could, and no way that I would, just ask the auditor to run every possible combination of numbers to bring into this meeting, we'd be sitting here looking at numbers all day. So, I didn't want to do that, it would be too much work. So the cost could be spread over, the districts we have, they're currently in place of why those numbers are the way they are, that's what I made up. Really what I'm trying to do is, is get everybody thinking about organization, and coming together as a leadership team to discuss EMS, and figure out what it is we need to do to move forward, to make sure that two people, two people are in the ambulance 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This was, this is another little spreadsheet that was put together, this was requested to know what a one-mil levy would produce. One-mil levy produces through these townships and villages, this isn't all of them, this is just the ones affected by, that we run EMS in, and a couple of them we don't, but these are the ones that are included. It is very small, I apologize for that. If anybody wants a copy of this presentation, I can email that to you, there are a few of the paper copies in the back, I made 20, and enough, so I can send those to you. But this number is $620,000, that's more than we need. If we form three or four districts, we have seven squads, one of them's already districted, one of them Bascom Joint already takes care of themselves, we would only need about $360,000 a year to pay everybody $3 bucks an hour. So, interestingly enough, that may not be the one that we're working for. You may not need that much, you may need more than that, depending on where you live. Since the beginning of this, since the inception of me coming out and meeting with you folks, I've met, I've learned a few things. One of them is, I talked to the Bloomville Fire Chief just the other night, I presented this very same thing to the, to the commissioners on Tuesday, to the fire chiefs on Wednesday, and to you guys today, and since that time, Bloom and Bloomville have decided that they are going to do this. They're going to have a formally joint ambulance district in their area to compensate the volunteers. To me, that is a complete show of support towards their guys, towards their commitment to the community, and I think it's very important that we, we recognize that. All I'm trying to do is make sure that we have a two-person, 24-hour-a-day ambulance crew on our truck, and I need you guys to realize that it is your responsibility to help me do that. With that, I appreciate your time. Now what we need to do is discuss this as leaders. Yes, sir?
You said, what's the $60,000, is that per?
Per squad.
Per squad, okay. Because you're, you generated $600,000, and you don't have 10 squads.
No, and I, that's what, that's what one-mil would generate, if we did it in all of the, and I was thinking that on a good day, on election day, we might get six of those, maybe? And that would still be good enough to produce for 10 squads, or for seven squads. And we also don't necessarily need seven squads, but as a, the local elected officials, those decisions should be made by you.
Yes, sir. And also, you mentioned this, but you also mentioned a county-wide one, can you give us?
Right, a county-wide one.
Is this more beneficial than a county-wide district?
Yes. Basically, it's span of control, because you don't, if you have a, and here's what, I'll just use this as an example, this is the way it makes sense to me. If everybody in the room decided that they would want to join Bascom Joint Ambulance, and join ambulance district of Bascom, said, "Okay, everybody can join." Suddenly, the meeting would go from having five members to 19 members. And if you had a room this big, with a meeting of 19 people and a fiscal officer trying to decide on things for seven different meetings, that meeting would become very cumbersome, and would be very difficult to make any decisions. So I believe that that would be an example of a county-wide system, if every single township and village in the county joined one. So, the benefit of multiple joint ambulance districts over one large district is the size of each, and also, you would have local controls over a squad that you know, and the community that you live in. Does that make sense?
I see your point, but I'm not, I mean, one, one meeting with possibly more members, is that going to be more beneficial than to have, than to have four different ones, and then they're not maybe?
Well, their only coordination is, you know, in my opinion, there's your experience with that having EMS in this area, I say no. I say the smaller span of control is better than the large district. Professor Harper?
I will, I teach organizational design, I will tell you, if you want to have a 19-member meeting, you'll never get anything done, because you do have pockets of little agendas coming down that won't work with each other. One of the things I'm concerned about though, Ken, is in terms of accountability, if you do form four different districts, who's going to have the accountability, how are they going to be accountable to the county if they start to say, you know, "It doesn't guarantee that we're still going to have 24-hour manning," what kind of accountability are you going to hold down to if that happens?
Right, and that was why on the very second slide of this presentation, I asked for, what is an acceptable amount of out-of-service, and what is, what do I do when they refuse to report? That's the very first two things we need to get solved. Two, is, and to answer your question, is, the accountability that we're going to have is, once a month, the joint ambulance district of whatever district I'm talking about, would have a meeting, and I would be at that meeting along with each local coordinator from either squad, or however many squads are governed by that district. That would be a face-to-face meeting with the elected official once a month, and that's the accountability. Currently, and I was reminded of this at the chief meeting, is, for a very long time, the coordinators had free rein of whatever happened, and however they did what they wanted to do, and we need to reel that in, gain control of this leadership. And really what this whole thing is about, is organization and leadership.
There's a follow-up, if a district has been formed, does not, does not meet the standards that we set in terms of percentage of time in service, could the county then force them to disband the district and revert back to a model that goes under your control?
The county's only teeth in this situation is what I mentioned as our responsibility. If the EMS agreement that we would have to rewrite, and I'm hoping that from this, we rewrite it anyway, it was written originally in '78, that document gives me the teeth to say, "You're not meeting the needs of the contract, we pull our assets." The assets that we have are all of the physical assets, the ambulance, all the medical equipment. What I need, and what I'm asking for, is a joint ambulance district of local district leaders to come together and say, "Hey guys, we can't, we cannot meet the needs of this schedule, we can't be in service 24 hours a day, seven days a week," and they call me and say, "Ken, we either need some, we gotta get rid of this ambulance, because it's more of a liability than an asset." Because an empty ambulance sitting in your station, if somebody drops dead in front of that firehouse, and they look over and see an ambulance, and they're laying there with their last dying breath, go, "Why didn't they come?" And another ambulance comes from 25 minutes away, that's a real potential for litigation. So, I would rather them call me and say, "Hey, we can't do it, we just can't do it, so take the ambulance until we can," and then at least we know from that point moving forward, where our lines need to be drawn, for which ambulance goes to what call.
Still seems to me you're, you're putting a lot of faith, and I'm not, I'm not saying that the people aren't worthy of it, but what you're doing by setting up these districts is expecting and hoping that those people that run those districts will have the same conscientious focus on staffing as you would. So, or, or in the capacity, right. So, if, yeah, I mean, this.
Well, that's, that's one point, and what I would hope to achieve here is that if, if you as community leaders know that you cannot staff an ambulance, let me know, I can remove that ambulance, it will be longer than an hour, you'll never know if it's there.
Ken, I have another question, and I'll preface my comments with the fact that I'm the mayor of Greenspring, so I'd rather pay less than the one-mil, than two-mils. So, I have an incentive to go to the smaller district. However, if you're, if you're concerned, really is the number of people in the meeting for the county-wide district, why can't we do it like, is there statutory reason why we can't do it like, say, a city does, where you have different wards, which would be those smaller districts, and then a couple of large people there? I mean.
What was that question from the prosecutor, because I don't know the answer to that question.
Excuse me for just a second, because this is a public meeting, when you stand up, could you state your name?
Adam Greensley, Mayor of Greenspring.
It'll be recorded, thank you.
Director Dine, County Prosecutor. Adam, your question is, any entity that's a member of a joint ambulance district has the right to have a vote in any decisions that district makes. So, if you have a, if you have a 19-member entity, then everything, you know, Jackson Township can't be put on some, you know, committee for, you know, the Fourth of July parade, they have the right to be there to make a decision on how much we're going to compensate our volunteers.
So we can't get together?
So, so we can't get together with, with Adams and Pleasant, with Greensprings, and say, "We vote so-and-so to be our representative to the joint, the county North Ward Board?"
I don't believe so, because if you, if you do that, then you end up basically with a proxy situation. And there's nothing in the Revice Code that allows, allows a, a, an entity that's like a proxy to, to, to report in a public meeting.
I mean, part of my concern too, is like the good professor here said, was the, uh, fact that I think a countywide district provides us more consistency across the county for the service that's being provided, probably less out of service time, um, if you can kind of manipulate those, the coverages a little bit across the county. Um, I was telling Chris, I mean, our problem right now is we can't keep, we can't keep paid police officers.
I could solve that for you.
Well, how's that?
Well, your, your chief is too good. He trains people. And Snuski County Sheriff, then steals them and he wants to steal them. And our sheriff would like to have a couple if he had the budget, uh, because Charlie trains them. And, and that's, people know they're getting a good officer from there.
Right. No, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but that, that's, and I was interested when you were talking about us realizing or understanding what our responsibility is in staffing. We, we don't have the capacity to do it. Um, like I said, we can't keep part-time paid police officers. We can barely get a full-time guy under Charlie, so.
Well, and, and honestly, um, I, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate that, but, um, if, if, if a township or a joint ambulance district can't, can't keep track of or maintain control over twenty people, there is no way that I can be expected to keep track of a hundred and forty to two hundred and ten. The span of control is just way too big. Uh, and span of control is, is the terminology that comes out of the National Span of Control System. I didn't create that. Um, you should have no more than five to seven and absolutely no more than nine under your direct supervision. There's no way I can be in Greensprings every day, let alone because of all the other duties that I have that are in front of me administratively and also operationally. There's no way that I can be there to ensure the, the smooth operation of that, of that district. Now, once a month, I can do that. Uh, maybe even once a week I can do that. But without direct supervision at the local level, we'll have what we had at your meeting. And I know you recall that.
Absolutely.
And, and, and those kind of things happen where people go, "Well, nobody's watching what's going on, and everything's going in a handbasket." And I, I can't be held responsible for things I didn't even know were occurring. So I think it's, um, the model that I have suggested, and truly that is all it is, is a suggestion. My goal from this entire meeting was just to get you guys in one room to talk, to discuss with the, the members of a successful joint ambulance district. How did you do it? Why did you do it? And what do we have to do to be successful like you are? Um, there's going to be a thousand more questions than I have answered. I brought the experts with me, um, meaning that Mr. Devine and, um, I know Julie's here somewhere. They, they, County Auditor, I didn't see you. I was just, I was staring at you. So the auditor is here to answer questions like this. Um, and really what I want to do is have the leadership, that you guys, believe it or not, are the leadership of Seneca County EMS. You just have never been told that. Because when this thing was signed in seventy-eight, we're three or four generations away from the signing. There's one person in the room who signed that document, and his name's Tim Lynch. I know he's here somewhere. There it is. So he's got, you know, Tim Lynch has more historical knowledge of what we did in seventy-eight than anyone else here. I don't, I'm not taking away from the rest of you, but I know he signed that document. So, the, but I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but I don't believe that the original signers of that document ever had any intention that the county run everything.
No, that, that's the whole purpose. Tim Lynch, would we tell him? The whole purpose of doing what they did, and again, it, it was based on some, some of these departments, fire departments had established ambulance. You know, now, I'm not saying that they were well-equipped or anything like that, but they did have established EMS units. And the whole, the whole focus, the whole, the whole reason that they chose the particular, uh, areas or where the ambulance were displaced, number one, either they, they had a, an EMS unit in place, not, I'm not saying well-equipped, an EMS unit in place, or they needed to put one in that particular area. They had a fire department so that it wasn't so much, uh, the, the whole idea was so that, that EMS service was a short distance away. You talk about twenty-five minutes. I can remember when it was twenty-five minutes. You called, you called Tiffin, and they had two guys in, in the ambulance. They, and they didn't, they, they kept it at one guy's house. He had to go pick up the other guy, and then, you know, he had, you know, probably twenty minutes just getting there. And after they, they get to our, like in our area, then they had to find the right road and the right place. And that didn't happen. Of course, you didn't have all these other modern facilities. But the original intent was, let's, let's take it out of the community, let those people know their, they know their areas. They know the people that live there. And when they call in and say, "Okay, we, we have, we might have a heart attack at this place." They didn't run where to go, and it didn't take twenty-five minutes.
And I appreciate your, your historical references there, and your, your knowledge of, of what happened and why we did it. Or, or why they, the, the Township Trustee and the Village Councilman need to use you as a resource. Um, what I'm doing is making sure I'm, I'm raising the red flags and we need help. And the help that I think we need is in leadership, and I think we need to organize, get together, talk about EMS once a month in your district. Um, another thing is, the sky isn't falling yet, folks, but if you read the out-of-service schedule, you see where the needs are. So the folks in Adams, Pleasant, and Greensprings need to do something very, very soon. Um, the folks in Betsville, Liberty, Jackson need to do something very, very soon. Uh, but we do not want to have it, in my opinion, and you may, mileage may vary, but we do not want to have a private ambulance service coming here and bid on this contract. Because if you think you wait now, you have no idea what, what wait even means. Um, and they may not ever find your resume and just go home. Trust me, they do that.
Rec. Cleveland, Adams Township, I got a question from the Bascom people. Where are they getting their people from? Are they coming from the Tiffin, Fosteria areas where the hospitals are? Do these people are trained or any?
No, I'm trained.
Are they coming from Tiffin and Fosteria?
Harry Miller, coordinator for Bascom. Um, just recently, we had a guy who was interested, found it on Facebook. This major gave the guy three names, Bascom, Betsville, and Attica. Out of the three departments that called, I was the first one to call him to see if he was interested. He'd been coming over doing some walk-around of the station, just, he heard about us from other people. I think it's the leadership, uh, people in the community that bring people to us. Uh, but then, they come from Fosteria and Tiffin. And honestly, I think most of our people are now within the district, living in the district. I think there's only maybe two or three from the city of Tiffin, city of Fosteria that come down home with us.
I don't think we're going to get a huge, dense block of people to come to the county to work for three dollars and fifty cents per hour. I think what we're going to do is we're going to see people in our local community, people that are already your EMP or people that are already your firefighters, decide, "You know what? I can make a little extra scratch sitting at home mowing the grass if I do this for the squad." And they're sitting on the fence right now. They were like, "I don't know. I only go to school for four months. That's crazy." A three-fifty an hour makes them go to school for four months. And I know that sounds ridiculous, but the person that told it to be best, and it makes the most sense to me, is Dan Stoll, who's been the EMS coordinator here for almost thirty years, and he goes, "You know, if they'd paid me all the hours that I worked in Bascom, I'd have about three new trucks by now." And that's not much money, but it's truck payment, you know? Yes, sir?
Yeah, James Stoll, let me tell you. For the life of me, I cannot figure out why we want to put a band-aid on this thing. Thanks to him, we got this thing now. And, uh, it's been in place since nineteen seventy-eight, and it seems like it has just evolved and grown and went in different directions. And now we're going to try to band-aid over here and band-aid over here. And if the Northwest District starts paying their guys four-fifty an hour because they like their guys better, and the Southwest District can't do it, and they get into an argument with their guys because they won't pay four-fifty, we got another band-aid we got to create. Why don't the Commissioners grab a hold of this thing? Put it on your agenda at the top priority. Because picking up dead people or injured people along the side of the road or in a burning house or whatever is one of the most important things that there is. It's your job. You can be board. You're not going to have to have five, six, eight, ten boards, whatever, with nineteen, twenty different people making decisions. You guys run the county. Pick it up, put it on your agenda, make it your highest priority. And then run it from the Commissioners. I, we haven't, and Pleasant Township hasn't had much to do with the ambulance those events. Knowing it's there, many, it's over in Greensprings, and those guys run it, and we just assume that they're going to be there. And we've been able to find plenty to do without having another meeting to go to or another board to be on.
Sir, if I can res, respond to that, and that was one of the things that we discussed. So Snuski County has got that. They've got a joint ambulance system that's run by the county. They spend two-point-five million dollars a year. Now, if we go to the voters of Seneca County, and we gotta go, if we did that, and we had to put a levy on, we would have to go to the total voters of Seneca County. Do you think the citizens of Tiffin or the citizens of Fosteria would ever vote to put a millage on to take care of the township? Because they already have.
I have, I have an answer for that.
Yes, sir.
We have something in our county called SCAP, right? It gets funding from all over the place. We got buses sitting out in the county, one guy sitting in it, waiting to pick up somebody for a four o'clock doctor's appointment. He sits there maybe from two o'clock to four o'clock with a motor running to do that. We have parks, Seneca County Park District. We put hundreds of thousands of dollars in. We have farmland preservation. We have.
Seneca County Park District doesn't get any tax money.
Yeah, well, that's another discussion for another time. Anyway, what I will tell you is, the people of Seneca County are one. We're not Tiffin and Bascom and Betsville. We're one. And, so you guys got to show the leadership on this. We can't talk about leadership. That's your job. Pick up the ball and say, "The people of, in the city of Tiffin, we're going to build an ambulance service that works for everybody in Seneca County."
We can afford that right now, sir.
And I think we should do it.
We can. I can park one ambulance right here. We can respond to everyone for the budget that we currently have.
So, and you can do it? You can cover the whole county?
One.
And why don't we do it?
One.
With one ambulance?
Whoa, 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 you said, now, now wait, that's not what he said. That's not what he said. He said, listen now, wait a minute. Listen to what you just said. You said you can do the job with one ambulance.
No, I said, we could do it for the money that we have with one ambulance.
I didn't say that. I didn't say you mean you don't have that money. You do have to have more money.
Forty minutes. And if we have any ambulance calls other than the one that you need us, you're screwed. We may not be able to get.
Do you think, do you think that there's anybody in this county that's ever had a heart attack or ever had a problem with a car accident randomly, that doesn't think that that's a higher priority than other things?
They are, the ones that, oh, you have, if you got one in Greensprings, one in Attica, and you got one ambulance, who takes priority?
What, what, I, I'm not telling you that his suggestion is going to be.
But I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, you can't, uh, you can't do it that way.
Well, I'm just telling you, you're trying to put a band-aid.
No, and you're trying to push off the leadership onto a different group. I'm Chris Harper from Attica.
They're the County Commissioners. We're.
Yeah, but you're, you're a Township trustee, aren't you?
Of, of how many?
Of one. So this is the thing. We're talking about putting leadership where the need is. We're talking about moving leadership to where people can make better decisions. I'm, I se, I support the idea of the smaller districts, as long as the county has some teeth to be able to hold those districts accountable if they don't follow through. The fact is, uh, smaller organizations tend to be able to get more things done. You try to maneuver with a large organization and just push it off to the County Commissioners because it's their job, let's push it off to the state. Maybe it'll be their job. Or why don't we just have the federal government? I mean, I'm making an exaggeration here, folks. But if we're the leaders of the county, we gotta take some of that leadership back to our home basis. We have some ability to do things. Nobody knows ABR District better than ABR. No one knows Bascom better than Bascom. No one knows Pleasant Township better than Pleasant Township. We don't have the ability to put people in Greensprings, keep Greensprings running. So apparently, your system right now isn't, isn't working, so let's push it off. Well, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting, here's what the money does.
I say, cut it off and start to make a program that works right from the start.
That's what we're doing. That's what he's suggesting. And the thing is, the thing that the money does is allow you to hold people more accountable. The fact is, if you have completely volunteer force, with, and all you're doing is helping for them to show up, the nominal fee gives you some teeth to be able to say, "We expect some stuff out of you."
Can I make a suggestion? Um, who's the president of the Bascom Joint Ambulance? Could you stand up and introduce yourself?
Captain Reinhardt, uh, Low County Trustee in the Bascom Joint Ambulance.
Could you answer the simple question for me? In two thousand and one, you guys formed a Bascom Joint Ambulance District, is that right? How's it been working since you did that?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we've had problems too, even though we've had this nominal fee. We've been out of service too. There's been different years that hard-finding people, we've been with that, being in place. So it's, it's not the ultimate, I mean, you're still going to have problems trying to find staff. There, I think you do have to reduce the squad. There's, there's going to be too many. Eventually, you have to reduce the squad so you have fewer squads to man. And, and then maybe you can maintain, but eventually, it's going to have to go to full-time where you, where you base them. Maybe you start during your day hours, but that's where they have most of trouble. But, no, it's, he's, there is some truth that we're just kind of putting a band-aid on this. Five, ten years down the road, you're going to have more problems. Maybe right away, no.
I agree, but I believe that when you guys come together as a board, there's three of you, and if we have two other boards and that's three or four people, once a year, we have a meeting coming together. Well, of those entities, decide from that point, if you're running two squads, can you, can you man two or not? If not, we remove that squad from service. I think the four-squad model has, has a lot of merit. Um, however, I'm not asking to throw money at it. This isn't about money at all. If you don't need money, that's great. I need organization and leadership at the local level. That's what we need. We have to have it. Because if you guys remember back in the fourth quarter of thirteen, when I came to you and said, "You guys have a squad," and they're like, "We have a problem with that manning?" We didn't know that. You had no idea. Nobody's communicating it to you. As leaders of the community, you need that information or you can't make that. So as a, the joint ambulance district model is a baby step towards what you're, to get, towards what yours suggest, towards what yours suggest. It is not a band-aid. It is a step towards success. We don't make the move. We just sit here and complain. It's going to fail. And when it fails, we are, and I'm going to not put words in the prosecutor's mouth, I'm just going to ask. We are one good lawsuit away from being not here.
Excuse me, Ken, Zeno, person that, when we fail, somebody dies.
I agree.
That's when failure really hits. Forget money, forget everything. Your loved one is out there, and you're on the phone, but somebody's having a heart attack. And that ambulance is out of service. Now they got to come from, from wherever, and that person dies. Now, and you're sitting in this room, what would you think? What would you want to do? That's where failure really hits, when somebody dies. That's what we're talking about. There's life and death.
We need, we need clarification, though, because I asked the prosecutor about the Tiffin and Fosteria. I think we had a rural fire district. He said they wouldn't have to. They wouldn't vote. So I think we need clarification on the Tiffin and Fosteria vote in this district.
Well, I, there's two different issues, I think. I think, uh, Mr., as King's World raised the countywide district, and if the County Commissioners did a, a, a district that they're allowed to under, under Chapter Three of the Vice Code, then that would be a countywide district. And if they wanted to raise money for that district, they could put on a levy, uh, to, to fund those services. And, and that, that would be the entire, you know, four corners of the county, including Fosteria and Tiffin. And I think, you know, as, as, uh, somebody who's knocked on a lot of doors, uh, I think you'd have a hard time getting people in the city of Tiffin to vote to pay for, uh, a countywide, um, ambulance service when we already got excellent, uh, ambulance service within the city limits of Tiffin. Uh, same thing in Fosteria. Um, if you did a, a district like Ken's talking about, a, a joint ambulance district, again, I, I, I sent out a letter, um, to everybody a couple of weeks ago. The Commissioners are not a party to that entity. They can't be legally. Only people that can be members are townships and municipalities. So if you formed a, a countywide, um, ambulance district under Type of Five with a.
So if you formed a, a countywide, um, ambulance district under type of five of the vice code, then that could include, in theory, everybody in the room. It can include, uh, if, you know, Bloomville says, we don't wanna be part of this, then they could say, we're, we're not gonna be part of it, and the district could exclude Bloomville. It could exclude Tiffin, it could exclude Fostoria. Whatever is excluded would not vote on a levy issue. So if Tiffin is not a member of the, of the joint ambulance district, then they wouldn't vote. Obviously, that helps your chances of passing a levy, if you're trying to pass a levy. But again, that, that system doesn't involve the three people at the front of the room. Only time you're going to them is when they're, when you want a new bus, or when, um, you need, you need the, the newer, greater equipment. Uh, and you want them to pay for that equipment, uh, under the way the system works out. They're not part of that decision. They're not pushing for that, uh, that fund, and that would be whoever's in that joint ambulance district.
Would, would the members have to choose, so would Tiffin have to have a right of refusal to be part of that?
Absolutely. Every, every, and I like, I like to use Bascom, that's fine. If, if, if Bascom stood up and said, we're opening our doors, we will take any of you who wanna join our district as a member. Then each legislative body, so Reed Township, Bloom Township, the village of Bloomville, all those entities would have to have their own public meeting, discuss it, and vote. And if Bloom Township voted, we wanna be part of that district, then they, they could join that district, and then Bascom joint could accept them as a member to their district.
Could Bascom say, we don't want Tiffin and Fostoria?
Bascom could say, we don't want anybody. They, 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 they're the, I mean, you know, they're, for, for you and I, they're, they're the girl we're asking to go prom. She can say no to anybody. So they, 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 they can say no. They can also, and again, that's kind of, I mean, Ken likes the, uh, you know, Ken, Ken's, Ken's looking into the future, looking at this meeting. Uh, you know, the first meeting and then the, you know, the, the tenth meeting of this joint ambulance district, and he's seeing a, a nineteen-member, uh, you know, meeting. And that's, you know, his concern is that nineteen-member meeting having, having, you know, agreeing what the agenda was. Uh, if you have, again, if you have, if you have a, you know, smaller, you have Bloomville and, you know, you know, Venice Township, I mean, they all know each other. And they pretty much familiar with the, the train, and, you know, they don't, they don't stop knowing the train lines across kind of life. But I'm guessing the folks in Venice don't really know, you know, Jackson Township all that well, and what the needs are in Jackson Township. And, um, and that historic relationship between Jackson and Fostoria. And how that, I mean, there's, there's, there's all those issues that go back, you know, generations, that the people on Jackson Township know a whole lot more about than, than anybody in, in Venice will ever be able to figure out coming to a monthly meeting. So that gave those, those issues, so, yeah.
Stevenator, Jackson Township. Ken mentioned nineteen people. Does every entity have to have a representative or be, like you said, you have a proxy and maybe three or four of them choose similarly like regional planning? Not every township is a member of region. I, I, I was reading here, it says three to nine, nine's the maximum, uh, as far as, uh, the amount of, um, people to be, it's, uh, on the board.
I, I don't agree with, I think the, the board just got the, that, that, every, every entity.
That's, that's Ken's maximum.
Yeah, yeah, that's Ken's organization.
That's from Ken's.
I mean, but every entity would have a vote. And obviously, you could choose if you're, you know, if you don't wanna, you know, show up and vote, you could, you could not show up and vote. I mean, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure the Bascom district, um, you know, the, I'm sure over the course of, you know, thirteen years, somebody's been absent from a meeting. And they still conducted their business and still resolved issues, but every, every entity is entitled to a vote. And I can't imagine that a township wouldn't wanna be there and make sure that their interest is, is at that table.
I guess, I think the, the big question that we would have, if we were looking at like a rural county, um, district, you know, Bascom would have to join into that. And I, from what I'm hearing, Bascom's really, really happy with what they have. So I mean, it's probably not even an option, right? I mean, could somebody help you with that? So, so we probably shouldn't even spend more time dwelling on it. There's certain districts that are.
Anything's open, anything's open.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that before we spend all Saturday.
We're all, we're all one township, but we all need to work together, our neighbors.
I agree, that's. That's why I'd look at it countywide. The consistency in service.
But I think what we need to, what we need to recognize is that a countywide ambulance district, it is possible. But it would not be in the governance of the Seneca County Commissioners, and that's what Mr. Ryan, I think, just explained. So if, if, if we do that, that would be at the local level. And, you know, the nineteen members, I just used that as an example. I, I don't really, it doesn't matter how big it is. All I really need, I need a two-member certified crew on every ambulance that is in service. And that takes me back to the original question of how much service time is, how much out-of-service time is acceptable? Fifty percent? Is it okay with you guys that the ambulances are out of service twelve hours a day? Or should it be less than that? What is your ultimate goal? Tell me that, and I will make that happen, but I need your direction on this.
Yes, sir. Bill Miller, you're talking, going like four districts, which I think is the word, the way we ought to look, going rather than seven, you got seven squads and.
Yeah.
I'm going to four districts, and finally, you got two in this district, and you realize, we really only need one squad.
Right, you know who would make that decision?
The board.
The board. Now, county is banning or maintaining new squads, and some of that money goes to help pay, you know, for your.
It already does.
Well, I'm saying is, you're not gonna need a squad, physical squad, you need to have one squad that you're maintaining. That might be going to help save for the personnel.
Mike, tell me why, for, I have ten ambulances, including backup, my entire maintenance budget's ten grand a year. So if I take five of those ambulances away, need one backup, need four in the, in the work, uh, sure, I need a free man. I mean, really?
Well, you know, if you're maintaining down to one squad, it's probably.
One guy.
I don't know, I, I thought maybe this, uh, this meeting was, was to, uh, look at this, but isn't, isn't our focus, our, our focus should be, how do we get more people to get involved? And being a squad.
Why do I keep that?
That, that's the bottom line. I don't care if you have two squads, four squads, seven squads, it's not gonna do anything. We don't have people running.
But don't you agree that if, if we try to say, well, we're gonna have four squads and we're gonna put them in the four corners of the county, but then I'm gonna expect people from Bascom to go to Greensprings and run for three bucks an hour, you think they'll do that?
No.
No. I think what we need to focus on is the community at large, the smaller communities. People that live in New Real are more apt to go and be a member of the New Real ambulance. Because they can be at home, being compensated as a volunteer, not going to work. You see what I mean? We're not paying in hourly wage, we're not paying people a career wage to go to work. We need these folks to volunteer in their community. You're right, then we need more people.
Don't you, don't you think though, that we're the choir here? We're preaching to the choir. Your leader's shoe is to get that message out to the people who are sitting at home and say, expecting the ambulance to come when we call.
Yes.
I don't, I think that's, that's, that is where this message needs to get to those people, you know, and I, I.
And I'm giving it to you as the leadership to take that message to you.
I'm not sure how, you know, I, I think maybe we need to maybe brainstorm a little bit, figure out how that's gonna be done.
I totally agree.
I mean, just put an ad to paper, I think, it has to be personal.
And the villages have to go to the homes and tell, it, it's, we're gonna have to sell.
That's right.
We, the people that are representing everybody, have to get on board.
Yes, sir.
Nate Blazer, Bloom Township, what Ken's done here primarily, and, and this is my thinking, what Ken's doing. Is, uh, he's putting this to the forefront, so we're talking about. And working, the, the biggest part of, our problem isn't the money. Although if you had a ton of it, you could just pay somebody and tell them this is what you want to run. It isn't necessarily that we don't have people that are willing to volunteer the time. And it isn't necessarily that it has to be controlled by a bigger group or a smaller group. Really what needs to happen is there needs to be more interaction, and this is, this is me talking, this is my opinion, needs to be more interaction between the people who signed the agreement. And I know I'm really directing this out to you guys, and this is the truth of the matter. People who signed the agreement to supply manpower for the squad, and the people who are trying to run the squad. To work together to get more volunteers. And get the word out. Actually, for thirty years I've been on EMS, and I've seen our, uh, manpower worse and I've seen better. It's in flux all the time. And manpower reduces, and all the other squad members that are here, I'm sure have seen the same, that manpower reduces, puts the pressure on us, we, we get out and we gather more volunteers. And we get a, a good group together, the, the squad's running well, we get to put these fine time, and we relax. People move away from town, people get burnt out, they quit the squad, manpower goes down, we get up tight again, and we get out there and start recruit. If we had a better method where we actually met once a month, like Ken's saying, to discuss where is our squad level right now? How much money do we have? Can we afford to pay a little bit? It's, it's definitely an advantage to have some pay there. There's no doubt about that. Thirty years ago, when somebody called EMS, and, and ordered people that are within our squad, they know that that person was dying, or they got hurt really badly. Today, when somebody calls EMS, they may have tripped over a rug and broke their finger. So the volume of calls, as a percentage, is, is going up great, so we need more people than we did then. Because we just have a lot more calls today. You can't change society, so we have to change the, the county. And we can do that. And I think that by getting together once a month to talk about EMS, and our responsibility to man that squad, will at least help the situation. It certainly isn't a first. And this is really about these things. Bringing the leaders together that are responsible for that piece of the pie, to make sure that it's maintained instead of reactionary, which, you know, it's common that it goes that way. Especially when it's being taken care of and you're not hearing their problems. Um, things start going wrong, and Ken starts getting phone calls, commissioners start getting phone calls, then there's big meeting, and here we are. So that's my take on it.
Thank you for that summation, Chief, cause that was perfect. And, and that makes absolute sense, and I agree with every word you said. And so I, and that, that's all I need to say, Jeff.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. If this township A, B, and C got together, formed a district, whose only purpose was to discuss EMS needs of that EMS district together. Forget the levy for a while, just let them get together and discuss, how can we get more volunteers? Maybe it's recruitment for local high school, maybe it's something else, but maybe it is levy too. If you had a district in your particular area that was just looking at only that, I think that would go a long ways toward, toward helping.
But it goes back to, uh, Ken's, I, I think that's very well put. What is an acceptable level of out-of-service? So let's say, in six months or a year from now, that, you know, we go, we, you guys form these joint districts. Okay, and we're a year from now, we're back here in two thousand fifteen, and we find out we're still out of service a lot of times, what do we do then? You know, by setting up a, a, a benchmark, a threshold, that way we know we can, we can judge that as we've, we've been successful in this process, or we need to do something else.
What you're all seeing, Township Trustee, just a question, incentive to get somebody in, everybody's asked us when they want to get in the township, what's your insurance? Is it possible you could offer insurance to them? So I'd shoot the con, you're a big pool, would it be, it'd be the cheapest way to go?
At this point, it's, we don't have any skin in the game in terms of that joint district, because we can't be a member of that. So I don't see that there's any way that, and I, the affordability, unless it's just an option in. But some townships offer insurance based on what kind of revenue you, you have, and others don't. Um, so that, that, every township's a little different in, in what your, you know, your benefits and those kinds of things that you put out there, availability and or even profits, you know, provide funding for. But in this case, in those joint districts, we would not be, we would not be part of that.
Uh, Chris Hartman asking you, asking, to getting back to the question about out-of-service, I would suggest against creating some arbitrary percentage right away. What I would say is, it would be more of something where you would work with each individual squad and look for improvement. So if you say, hey, we expect you to have eighty percent in-service time, and you're talking to a squad that's been out of service thirty percent, or in-service thirty percent, that might be setting them up for failure. My idea would be, work with each individual squad, look for a, uh, an acceptable percent improvement year over year that they could manage. That, that's gonna be a little bit better than, say, taking some arbitrary out-of-service number that.
I'm looking for a number, like, what I'm looking for is, what, what is the acceptable level? And also, what do we do with the folks that say, I'm not telling you if I'm in or I'm out? I don't want, I don't want you to know because it's a pride issue. I'll just put that on the table, because that's what's happening. We're not telling you.
I think there has to be some hard, bad rule.
I need, I need some, I need leadership there, and that's, like, like Chief Blazer said, what we need is, we need to meet, we need to discuss these issues at the, at the local level and decide. If, if, if this is something we need to do, it may not be money. I don't really think right now we're at that point where we need money. We need organization and leadership.
Well, I think with.
And until somebody can tell the folks that refuse to report out of service that you have to, it's the right thing to do.
I think it is, because now you're expecting safety.
Well, what you and I think are not what a lot of these folks think, and that's why I'm bringing that here.
Well, that's why I'm saying, what teeth do you have currently? To say, if, if a, if a coordinator says, we're not gonna report to you, do you say right now you don't have any teeth to owe them accountability for that?
I, I do, and the only thing I can do is take the ambulance, but at this point, if I come out and arbitrarily take an ambulance. Then the township trustees and the village folks call these guys and go, your director just took our ambulance with no reason.
What about LGRF funds? What about withholding?
They don't exist anymore. Uh, the, the local government revenue assistance fund's been gone for, I don't know how many years. Um, the funds that we have, uh, from the slide I showed, our budget is five hundred thousand, three hundred thousand of it comes from billing, two hundred thousand comes from recasting.
Can you remove that coordinator?
I, well, coordinator doesn't work for me, they work for the township. They're appointed by the township by me and Ray.
There is county, county policy.
We know what place.
Which we follow.
Yes, we should. But if they choose to not follow them, the leadership that they, they answer to are you folks. So that's where we need to have leadership at that level.
Are you going to the township trustees, that's why he's from, or is from?
Yes.
Saying, hey, he's not reporting, it's your job to take care of that problem?
Yes.
Do they know it?
Yes.
Will they go do it?
They have not.
They should be.
Yeah, you said, Chuck Miller, Great Township. I've been a township trustee for ten, twelve years now. I've never appointed EMS director, ever.
That is, right, I know, you should. That's what I mean, the generational change.
Is it in that contract?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's an EMS coordinator, uh, the, the, the language in there on the last page where it says, the local subdivision will appoint a, a one person representative to attend the EMS advisory council and an alternate. We don't longer have an EMS advisory council, we have the EMS coordinator meeting once a month. And those folks are supposed to be held to, um, policy number thirteen and thirteen A, coordinator duty, and coordinator responsibility policy in that policy. And that is available online, I think, a hard copy for you ladies.
On that point, I mean, the, the contract is between us, the, the villages and townships and.
And the county commissioners.
Okay, well, herein lies the problem. I mean, I think honestly, before you came to that meeting, none of us had ever seen the contract.
Right, I brought one with me.
Right, so I think, really for consistency on that procedure alone, annually or sometime, the commissioners of the county is gonna have to notify the subdivisions that, hey, here's an agreement, you guys need to make sure you follow this agreement. You signed it with us, somebody's gotta be keeper of the agreement, and unfortunately with us, there's too much turnover at the local level. I mean, I appreciate what everybody's saying about, we need to get on board, we need to push it. Listen, nobody wanna be mayor, that's why I'm mayor. You know, I just, I hated the way the village was going, and I just had to take it, you know, I, I don't wanna do it. If somebody else told me, I wouldn't run next time. So I mean, that's the problem, is, it's just, the only thing to hold nowadays, people don't want responsibility. So trying to hit close to the law is even more. And I think the commissioners agree, I'm a team player. I, I'm going to be vulnerable up front in this. See that sighting right here? Once we make the decision and we're going in that direction, I'm going to be a hundred percent on board. I'm going to support if we want to do the local district, we want to do a countywide district, I'm going to get on board whatever, whatever we got, so. I just want to make sure everybody's, you know, talking about this stuff, so. Again, as far as the agreement goes, I think the county, coming up on the county, has to partner in that agreement to make sure that we know that the agreement didn't exist. We didn't know it didn't exist.
Aaron, what's your problem? I am probably one of two EMTs that actually, never started in nineteen seventy-eight, but I came on board in nineteen eighty-five after our squad was actually taken out of service and removed from that field because we could not man the squad. So I was one of the original coming back on to put the squad back in service. But that contract initially was to actually establish the squads in those different districts. And from that time, there were levies put onto the local level. Those levies basically were to help with manpower to kind of get the squad's personnel. We had uniforms at one time. We had money for training, and that was basically what was actually initiated from all those levies. From that time then, when another director was actually in service, those contracts were basically pulled and said, us as the county, we can do everything for you, you don't need to go back to those villages, you don't need to even bother those townships. And Tim will tell you, I used to go to those meetings and I used to sit there and tell them, hey, we're great, we're great. And Tim looked at me and said, we don't need our money anymore? No! And so all of a sudden, all the contracts went away. Well, we are now at a point where we are no longer able to fund ourselves, and so now guess what? We're reactive because we don't have enough money, we don't have enough personnel, and now we're coming back to you guys as leaders again. So we're rewinding, we're basically just asking you guys to consider. You had a contract in nineteen seventy-eight, it is still a reliable and valuable piece of document to put our squads in service, but our problem is that we've been out of the loop for so long that now we're coming back to you to get you back in the loop, and we're reactive instead of being proactive. So that's where we need to go from here, is we need to go and move forward. And we need to get you guys involved because we are desperately in need of EMTs. I've got twelve or fifteen EMTs, but every week, Len and I sit there and beg people to run. We have people who tell us, well, don't expect me to do weekends, I can only give you six hours. And, you know, I have to sleep at night, so I have to go off-call at midnight. So I, I'm not real sure if somebody else can cover those times. We are in a completely different timeframe for mindset to run EMTs. And so what we're looking for is the possibility, the least a nominal fee to help us try and at least have some type of support or some type of tool to be able to put these guys on the EMTs and say, at least if we pay you, could you please run? Because that's where we're at right now, all right? Training has increased, timeframe for actually continuing education has increased. We are looking at five to six months of these guys being in training, and we're not. But put them in the back of the squad, let them go anymore. These guys are clinicians, and there's a lot of expectation of these guys. And so that's another selling point is like, guys, this can be an advancement for you, this could be a career for you, but we've got to get them on squad, and that's where we're at right now. We're desperate to try and get them on squad and then to even keep them. Now, I'll be truthful, we've lost two or three guys to basket because they know that they're going to get paid over there. So that's where we're at, guys.
I know, of course, but my name's Kate Jett, and I'm with this law office of Green Township. My check is, we have, I don't know anything about a contract for EMS. We are part of the AVR file business. Does that mean if I live in Green Township and I call for an ambulance, Attica has to come first? I mean, I'm part of them too?
It has nothing to do with the district, but that's the closest ambulance to you.
Well, the closest one to me is the Republican.
Yeah, well, then the closest ambulance to you will be dispatched.
We had calls to my house and Attica's come and Republic has come and wants to help.
So I assume there's lots of people. I assume there's no sunset date on that agreement since it was, this is the first I've heard of signing in seventy-eight, so. Depending on what month it's signed, I would even warn them.
And I think yours, the Green Free Fund, was actually signing in eighty-four.
Okay, okay. I was alive then.
I need one of you, one of you.
So there is no sunset on that, so, but we should probably reevaluate.
Phil, you had a key enough, but you said the closest squad is going to go to. It's all the way out to West Hoda. That's our territory. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But, so you're going to dispatch Republican to West Hoda and not even call ours?
No.
That you said closest squad.
We did, the policy is.
Is that what you understood?
Years ago, we were on.
If your squad's not in the.
Right, we're not in service, but you said, you just said closest squad.
Okay, I understand your question, I apologize.
Yeah, I did want to make sure that what misconstrued is, we're just going to run into other people's territory or their closest.
And really the lines don't mean anything.
It's not about territory, it's about people, minor citizens.
I think we're talking about something that really doesn't matter. The operation side of this thing is stopped. We just don't have any people. You understand? We talked about that in our trustees meetings, how do we get people to work? And that's what we need to talk about.
Dennis Roser, San Diego Township Board of Trustees, EMT for New River, and my wife both have been for close to twenty years. As far as educating backup, and I'm going to act like Chief Blazer here, this is my opinion only, not everybody's. Good point. We still need the people. I don't know how many in here ran EMS. At three o'clock in the morning, you go to somebody's house, they assume you're going to be there. They don't know there's a problem. As far as educating somebody, the public don't realize there's a shortage. You know, EMTs, firemen, and I, like I say, I don't know how many of you elected officials into your car, EMTs or firemen. We're getting, we're getting this meeting run around. We came here for manpower. This is the very reason nineteen board members won't work. We've accomplished nothing here since we've been here. Dennis making the point, we get people, will the three dollars or three fifty make a change? I haven't done this for twenty years for the day, but yes, I think it will. We get members, they come on, we already train them, they come on for six months, a year, they're gone. Do they go to basket? I don't know if they went to basket, I believe they went to pay. Squads, they may have other jobs, this would be a good part-time job for some people, as I say, we've never been paid that much. I'm probably going to be off here another year or two because my car goes out. Never been off a bad. We can't keep young people on here because they go elsewhere. I don't want my taxes to go up. I've been in business in this county for forty years. And I'm for the day of myself, and it's been forty years since we lined that county and suddenly we found a different business. I don't know that we're going to have a choice on taxes, it's probably going to be shoved down our throat if we don't agree to go with this type of a system. I think what he's come up with, the districts, I think you've got to keep some. I think if you go in four, it's going to go right back to their table and say, why? And then heck, do you commissioners leave this go to four squads? Which I voiced out to Fred the other night at our township meeting, I said the folks can stop at their table even though they don't have nothing to do with it. That's about all I got to say. I think Ken got the right idea. Again, this is my opinion. Thank you.
I think it's about manpower, guys. We're talking about aging out, so I think we're missing a lot.
How about, like, getting nurses to run without taking classes? Like, is there any transition? Like, who knew, like, the state, like, I have a lot of nursing friends, I'm a nurse. Who like, I don't have time, I'd like to help, I'd like to do it, but I don't have time for classes.
No, they can't do that. I, I've asked, I've tried, I went to the state, I've lobbied, I've went to the nursing board. During my last tenure here, I did a lot of effort and work on that, and that is an impossibility with the, with the Ohio Order of Nursing and the Department of Public Safety, they won't talk.
Wasn't that, you know, legislative bill not too long ago, and basically the professional firefighters and all those guys all opposed it?
Yeah, it was shot down by every entity.
Just professional lobbying associations are much more.
I agree, I, I'm not going to assign blame to who did it.
Right.
I, I think it's an excellent idea because we have a lot of talented nurses that live within our districts, and they don't have an option other than to do an EMT course. And then they're limited, I'm going to go.
Ken, would you kind of clarify a little bit about what you're saying, because, you know, first of all, we don't want to end in a bidding war with the state again, but if there's, there's a, I think there, didn't you tell me that there is a level that you can pay without having to be part of the PERS system and all that sort of thing?
Only thing I know for sure is that is a cut and paste out of the Department of Labor's plan about what a nominal fee is to a volunteer. I cut and pasted it right out of the website from the Department of Labor. This is what I think that they researched as fast as we joined the ambulance district when they decided on what their nominal fee would be. It was based off of that twenty percent of what you would normally pay a full-time person that does the same thing. If that's convoluted enough, I can't.
Frank Cleveland, township. I agree, certainly agree. What I do think, we all need to get on board. We don't want to have one district outpaying the other one because then we're just going to have volunteers going back to work.
I agree with you.
There's where we need to come together, set a fee, and we all.
I agree with you, and, and I can't even, all I can do is make a suggestion that you guys did together, and the districts that I outlined are the ones that you currently hold. So Adams Pleasant and Greensprings, I recommend that one or all of you get on each other's agenda, come together and talk about this. That's what this meeting was about. It's about manpower and it's about organization. We need you guys to make these meetings, make them happen. All we can do is show you the path, you got to walk it. I can't do it for you, I'm not allowed, so.
Well, we need to change that too. I mean, quite honestly, it's not about the money for us, I've never said that we can't. I'm for a levy, I'm for paying for it.
Okay.
We can't levy leadership is the problem. And I know everybody says, we just need to take it on, the joint individual districts, but who are we going to get to do that? I mean, I, I got five kids at home, I work all the time, I don't have time to take on another responsibility. As I said, we're trying to work on it all the time. Who do we get to do it? We need some teeth from you on these local coordinators. I mean, even if we appoint them, that, that's part of the, we need to revisit the contract. We need to revisit the contract, put teeth in it to where they're, we can use. We can't levy leadership. I don't mind paying for a levy, but we can't levy leadership, that's the problem right now. And we don't have the capacity to offer the leadership. Like you said, a lot of these folks are doing a lot of labor of love, if you got paid three dollars an hour for everything you did, I got paid three dollars an hour for every meeting I went to and everything I did and our council members did. We'd be doing fine, but we're volunteers too, basically.
Well, the hours that I put in, three dollars an hour would be a raise, so.
I'm there with you, I'm there with you.
I'd like to introduce the Chief Loreno as the Fosbury Fire Chief. I'd like to hear your opinion.
That's pretty cool, buddy. After I talk, I will be the former fire chief. I got to say something, listen, Fosbury does have a dog in this place. Because we cover some of those surrounding township areas, not, not a big area, and we do a phenomenal fee. And we do it to be a good neighbor. And hold it.
You don't do it for a nominal fee, you charge a basket fee for this district. So many dollars per section to go out into Flosd Township to cover that people.
But it's not a, it's not a great amount of money.
Well, it's seven thousand dollars plus.
How much?
It's around seven thousand dollars plus every run you make, you pay six or eight hundred.
If you give me an opportunity to speak, I think that'd be fair.
Well, thus be fair to Flosd Township.
I'm not trying to insult you.
It's not a phenomenal fee to three bucks now.
First of all, we do bill, and we aggressively bill, but that money is drying up too, is what you get with Medicare. You know, no matter what the bill is, that money disappears. And, you know, six, seven thousand dollars, it's not a lot of money for an entire ambulance. Let's face it, you can't run ambulance service for six thousand dollars. I'm not trying to be insulted, but, you know, when you're paying for a lot of things, money adds up. It's about people getting out there and it's also about money. If you're fooling yourself, it's not about cost associated with it. Because I'm hearing a little bit of varying. I've been doing this thirty years on a volunteer basis, on a career basis. And you know, the reality is, people don't give a crap what is on the side of the truck when they're having trouble breathing. They want somebody there to help them, and that's where you got to keep your focus. Today's meeting, I got to commend the commissioners and Ken, would you get everybody talking to each other? Not arguing about specific details, but try to get a consensus of maybe a direction to start heading and make things better. The reality is though, and one of my questions is, some of these different models hasn't been included like a county system with the nominal pay, a way to develop that, to cover that, rather than the districts. You know, a countywide district, the breakaway like four or five districts. Because I think sometimes is what we forget, all of us, is we start forgetting, we start worrying about where that line's at. And that creates problems, you know, the people suffer when we start worrying about that. And we start getting in fights amongst each other for absolutely no reason at all, where we shouldn't be even be going. So I'm, I'm curious if you created any kind of model like that. If it was a countywide district, you know what, county, Tiffin and Fosbury jumped on board with a merger of the quarter. You know, if that's what it took to legislate something, get a legislator saying, you know what, is there a way to? And I heard some discussion with other people here about how many people sit on that board and if they elect a group, you know, east, west, central, or whatever they wanted to come up with, I bet we can get some legislator to jump on the bandwagon. Because as a person that has to deal with grants, and he's right, that well is drying up. And I mean, we're filling half of the buckets with sand every time, and it's not going to get any better, folks. And if you don't start doing the shared services and you're not doing stuff together, you're not going to get the grant money. And I think we're all missing opportunity if we really don't jump on the bandwagon, doing this stuff as consensus and as a larger group. Because even with the small breakaways, if you had four or five districts, are we going to get in the territorial lines? Are we going to get in five different operations, how they do think? You're right about the pay and all that. So just, I'm not trying to say anything specific, and I don't think you're objective, but tonight is make a decision and vote. It was to get everybody actually talking to each other. So that's the only thing I wanted.
That, that was my goal, get everybody to talk. And I'd like to also hear from Tiffin Fire Chief, Ben, just to, to hear what you have to say about it. Please, everybody, anybody that doesn't know, I spent a lot of time working on Tiffin Fire Park and for your firefighter program. And Chief Ben is one of my mentors, so I would appreciate any words you have to.
Well, I'm going to say, I try to hide behind, you owe me a ten, but here you go. I'm going to start by saying, I started as a volunteer in nineteen seventy, I grew up in the fire service. At that time, the demands on people's lives were very, very minimal. That was the men's night out, and I'm sorry ladies, at that time we weren't on the fire service, but. You had nothing else to do in time, everybody got together, that was how you showed up, and you handed runs. Like Nate said, at that time, you were called for runs, you weren't called for everything, it's not everyone was handling it. This is a natural progression that you're going through. You're having trouble reaching people. I would somewhat disagree with Chief Loreno, I think that keeping it local gives you a little better control. I think the idea, it gives you the chance to answer what Lori says, how do you pay your people, how do you operate? I came to Ohio as a fire chief of private company to take it. They were run by twelve hundred runs a year covering Kings Island and that, having trouble staffing. We took it from a private company to a fire district over a period of years. But part of what they did was they paid on call. In that case, the first meeting in December, the company meeting in December, they paid, gave everybody their checks for the year. It was their Christmas lot. It gave them the opportunity to go home to their spouses and say, here's why I spend my time training, here's why I spend my time getting out of bed. Three fifty's not going to attract a lot of people, but it will help explain to the spouses what's going on. To totally rewrite the system right now to change it, I think is kind of a slap in the face that people have done it for years. The Rosers, because there, you've got them out there, show some appreciation, take it up to maybe paying for calls, addressing locally how you, you do your people. I think you're on the right, right path here in coming up with a local control system that gives you the answer. To answer your question about accountability, it's just like the township trustees. You know, you screw it up, the people are going to be there asking you why, what's going on. I've seen fire departments go up and down in manpower, volunteers forever, you're going to have a problem. Kevin brought up the fact that Baston Joint District has problems at times. Before they put their fee on, one of the things we went to, Tiffin did, and I'm sorry that, you know, we can't give everything with the contract with Clinton for a long time, we were running so many calls into Hopeville that in fairness, with Clinton and Eden, we went to Hopeville. that in fairness, with Clinton and Eden, we went to Hopewell and say, we're gonna keep running one. They're out of service so much, we're gonna have to talk about that. Shortly after that is when the fee came on, you started paying the nominal fees. All we do, we do Bascom, we just run new joint. They vastly strengthened to the point where they're wanting to do squads. They've got a backup, so they're easy to call into the city if needed, we know it's covered. Think long and hard, it's not a Band-Aid. It's not a, uh, be all and all, it's just the next step in what's coming down the road. As far as collections for the exhibits, I'll tell you that's going further and further away, thanks for your work we care at. The call and the demand on EMS is going to increase, thanks for the work we care at. We have to take the next step. What you do with people, I'm not sure how you get people. That's nature of the profession. That's the venue where I started. At one time, had a hundred and fifty plus thousand volunteers. They're down to a hundred and fifty. And those, many of those departments are designed to be social clubs. So you have to address them. Personal opinion, I support the, the idea of local districts where you have some control and you can address what your people need and how you best can serve them.
Question. Jared, would you like to add?
I agree with keeping it smaller groups. I know that's a lot for you guys, you've got a lot of complaints it is. And another task sometimes gets to be too much. But I agree with Chief and Ken in the smaller groups in that you have more control over your areas. If you do one joint, um, a local issue for you folks may not get addressed because it won't be an issue for the other folks in the group. We have a lot of out of services. Yesterday, we had an issue where a call came in, dispatch rep, this rep got a service sheet, sent another squad. I'm all about getting the help to a person. I know there's a lot about district lines. My job is to get the help to that person. If you wanna chew me out later because I sent the wrong squad, I'll take that. But I, my responsibility is to get the help to the guy that needs it or the lady that needs it. We do make mistakes, I'll admit that right up front. We've toned out the wrong squad, we've toned out the wrong fire departments. The dispatchers are trying to make a quick decision, and sometimes when it gets close to that line, they send to these things, right? And we hear about that after the thing. Like I said, my thing is getting the help to the person. Like I said, I know it's a lot of complaint, but for this to happen, I think, even though it's only a small amount of money, if you guys set up, um, districts, four districts for the county, they come together and, and decide that you only wanna pay three fifty across the board, across the county, you won't have that jumping from one side to the other. As Ken indicated, you could be sitting, the person could be sitting at home, mowing their yard, and they're still gonna get three fifty an hour. But you're gonna have that person respond if the call is dropped.
Now, now people picking and choosing, I don't wanna go to that, I believe, put their own squad.
It's tough for us when we do the tone, and then we wait to five minutes, we do another tone, then we tone on another squad. Um, for the, for the services that aren't notifying Ken when he's out of service, uh, that's an injustice for a person to drop that nine-one-one call for that. Because now they gotta wait anymore. It's not a lie, I know.
Thank you very much.
For the joint.
Thank you. Uh, the interesting time, I'm gonna put it back to the commissioners once you did, said, I'll go over to you.
Well, the first thing I would like to do, so we have something definitive out of this, and something that really disturbs me in energy is we talk about these joint districts and the potential of those. The thing that really, that really bothers me is the, the EMS dis, uh, squads that don't notify if they're out of district because of personal pride. I believe with this group here, we need to decide some definitive action that we can take over a period of time if we got squads that don't notify EMS, that, that to me seems monumental. And then, then again, the next step, you know, probably even, even first is, is to, for you guys to decide if you wanna join these joint districts, forget about the money right now, look at, see how you can, you can enhance these squads through these joint districts. And, and we gotta have some, the commissioners, we gotta have some bite in it if we got squads that refuse to notify. And set up a six-month period or whatever, if they notify, if they, if we get wind that there's been X amount of time that they've been out of service and they haven't notified them, we gotta be able to step in and put some teeth in this, this thing. Because that is absolutely not acceptable, more money.
The, um, shared services is a great thing, and we've been hearing a lot about this. I don't think any of us want to see us lose local control. Um, so I think what you, you do at the local level, I think that's very important. No one, it's been said already today, no one knows your township, your village better than you do. Um, and you're the ones closest to the people, you're the ones that, uh, you know, we gotta think of ways to reach out to those folks. Um, I thought that we asked Harry, I know that we need to go there, but is that, did, did they have that number of people right out of the gate? Probably not, it takes some time, um, for these things. But one thing for sure, it's probably sound a dumb statement, but we can guarantee we'll have no change if we don't change. I think we'll continue as they are, other than it might get worse. So, we've got to, uh, we've got to, uh, make an effort, get your people, I would encourage you to get together in your groups in whatever fashion, way you want to do that. Um, I'll kinda do a last call here, if anyone else that wants to speak, raise your hand. And so, Mr. Prosecutor, and then one more here.
Um, just so you all know, uh, if you're a township, if you wanna join with any other entity, whether it's a township or a municipality, you have a free lawyer at my office. Uh, so, so you don't have to worry about engaging in, in legal services. Um, so we got that, and we have the forms that were done for Bascom. And, uh, we got, uh, these amazing new computers where we can delete, um, you know, the name of the township and insert your township. If you wanna do something with Bloom, from Bloomville, we can delete and add in Bloomville. And we're willing to work with, uh, solicitors for the villages, get that information to them. These, the legal requirements to set this up are, 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 are minimal. Um, uh, the hard part is, is figuring out how you're gonna operate once you're together. But the, the, the legal stuff is minimal. If you need copies of documents or forms, um, just contact us, we can get you, uh, copy. Uh, friends of Bascom, um, would be happy to share. Uh, they also have, you know, years of minutes from their meetings. So if you wanna look at those and see what they've been doing historically, uh, I'd suggest you ask them for copies of those because you could see the, the growth of that district and how things have, have worked. So, if you have any questions for legalities, feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Tony, great, 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 now it's a good speed. I have a question. Since the townships are required to find this contract, find the man, manpower these days, does a township a lot of use in township money? Not that we've got a pot of gold here, but you're getting me wrong. But are you gonna use it in township funds to help fund this manpower situation?
Uh, can they use township funds to fund this? I, is, I don't know the legalities of that, I'm looking to Derek or Julie.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem using, using, yeah, if you got general, general fund monies, absolutely. Um, and, and, and that's the, that's the, the, kind of the thought process of, of doing the joint district, doing a levy, is for those townships that don't have, you know, a pot of gold, um, that they can, they can go to the voters and say specifically, we're looking for money for joint ambulance districts to, to fund that process.
With that levy, if you pass levy, that levy is for manpower purposes only.
You could be ver, you can, you can be specific or general as to, as to those levy language, um, and, and how, how that's used. You could do it as a township. You could put on a levy, you could, you could put out a levy for, for ambulance services. And, uh, and use that money for, um, I mean, that's the thing, you, you can't do a joint district yourself. Um, if, if you're, I mean, you have to have more than one to be a joint district. And if you wanna do it yourself, you could do, uh, you know, your, your township could do it, you'll do its own levy and raise those funds and, and fund the operations in your, in your township.
Can it come out of the, the general fund of the township?
Absolutely, yeah. Most, most townships I go to, they don't, they don't really have a whole lot of that, um, that they, they use at this point, but yeah, you can.
What would happen, let's say three townships down south in the county would join, or would form a EMS district. They put it to the voters for a levy, and that fails. What happens to that?
They're still a district, and they just wouldn't have the, they wouldn't have those levy funds to operate. They would either need to tap their general fund, or they would need to go without those, those absurd funds.
So forming a district, it obviously isn't the answer when we're talking manpower, I mean, as far as funding.
And they, and forming the district, you, you gotta, and that's the local knowledge of knowing your voters, will they support this or not? The advantage of joining the Bascom existing district, which is, and it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, um, from a conceptual perspective, but, but if, if, if you joined Bascom EMS district, then Julie is staffed with, I mean, she just takes the levy that's already in place and applies it to the, the, the additions to the district. They don't, your citizens don't get to vote on whether we wanna be taxed at this levy amount or not.
Yeah, but what if Bascom doesn't want everybody to join their?
Well, that's, and that's, that's where you gotta do, that's where you need to be nice to them.
It's not, it's not, it's not joking matter. I mean, it, basically what's gonna happen is, let's say, two townships wanted to join Bascom district. We have two squads in Bascom, now all of a sudden we're responding farther out. So when we need a squad locally, it's up in Betsville. That's not easy.
Not necessarily. I think we could keep, say Liberty and Jackson wanted to join Bascom. It's one reason why we could keep Betsville squad out there. Put somebody in charge of it.
And you think that, yeah, that the Bascom people are gonna drive to Betsville for three dollars a day?
Yeah, I'd be able to get it up there.
So it comes down to manning?
What that does is it gives you the opportunity to have a meeting with the people who are responsible for the manning so that the process could start to bring more volunteers into your system, into your township.
And that's what needs to be done.
That's the, that's the.
So everybody joining one district does not answer them.
That in itself isn't the answer. The answer is getting enough people together that have the desire to bring more people in. That's the sole purpose of the meeting, is to come up with a plan to bring more people into that, into that area that are responsible. Leadership in that area. Joining that district basically will give you, uh, the venue by which you can bring the people from your township together and, and find a way to bring those.
So if you're, you're gonna create a district and form a township, so you're gonna put a millstone?
What we're planning to do now is establish, uh, within our township, it's not a, it won't be a district, it'll just be the township. What we'll do is establish a, a, an entity, we'll have a meeting once a month that includes myself, the squad coordinator, and the township trustee. And that's where we'll begin, just from a leadership standpoint. Then we'll decide whether we're gonna put a levy on, whether we're gonna use funds to, to bring more volunteers in, or whether we're gonna use, start with just communication and education, trying to get more.
With that, Troy, is, is Joe, we'll, we'll talk to him. Um, EMS, whatever you wanna call it. A separate county EMS. I don't have a line, you can find wherever called. But respond to manning, say you've got thirty people on your roster, okay? You got two people in Bascom, two more people wanna sign up to get, get paid or whatever, they can go set it to Betsville. Get Betsville joint district. That's how that kind of pays right now. You know, if you're not pulling that squad out of your station, you're adding a squad to your district.
We're talking, we get four, four districts in the area, there's not gonna be, I mean.
Right, if you're not taking a squad out of that district, out of their jurisdiction, okay, for that district, you're just taking some people and moving them places, places. They're still getting paid for compensation or whatever you wanna call it. You know, just like you and I, you want a squad over in Aggett, they're in that district, we can go run a night. You know, if that's what the compensation or the districts that would join your guys' district is, is, is.
I've, I've seen three more hands in the room, and we're going on, getting close to the two-hour mark here. And I know, I re, we really appreciate you being here and everybody speaking up. I wanna give these, there was one here, one here, and then one in the back. If you've got anything else to add, and then, you know, people asking some time, you don't wanna miss what's going on, but we need to kinda wrap it up, I guess.
Uh, Bob Dyke will key in this part. I just spent two, two days down in Columbus, at a seminar for our teams association. Basically, it was on recruitment and retention. This recruitment and retention is basically what we're looking for, you know, recruiting some manpower and then retaining. The number one thing they stress on it, all starts at the top, leadership. If you've got poor leadership, um, the morale and all the rest goes downhill. If you've got good leadership, it brings the morale up, more people want to join. So, I don't think money's actually the issue here. I personally think it's the leadership. We need to instill stronger leadership, more friendly leadership.
Jim Cloud, folks of township, uh, Bascom EMS. Um, I agree with that for leadership. Um, we've had problems through the years with our district, even though we're successful now, but a lot of that, I attribute to our coordinator. Because he takes control, thinks, he does a very good job, brings people together, and, and I think that is really important in the district. And also, just for some information, besides the three fifty nominal fee, we also furnish their winter coat for them. We furnish uniforms for them. We do pay for a little, once in a while, a little bit of more training. Um, we give them a Christmas dinner for them and their spouses or boyfriends. We just do little things just to keep them together, to keep them happy, and I think it makes a big difference. Little things make a big difference to how you handle people. So it all helps, you know, that little bit of everything, um, to have a better squad.
There was one more hand in the back.
I would just go to motion to adjourn.
I just have one, I, I'm just wondering how many are actually elected officials in the room and how many are EMS folks?
Number of EMS folks, would you raise your hand? Some are gonna fall under both categories.
Right, I understand, I understand.
All right, there's the EMS folks. All right, elected officials.
Is there any way that you just kinda have elected officials just kinda stick around? We're all already here, I just wanna kinda hear and see what people are even thinking right now as far as what they wanna do. I know it's been a long day, I already gave up my tickets to my mother-in-law, made my kid someplace today, it's my birthday today, I'm gonna give it to them.
Happy birthday.
I'm already here, I don't want another meeting.
He likes this stuff.
Can elected officials please just stick around so I can hear, I wanna know what everybody's thinking.
I, I appreciate your commitment, that's happy birthday. But, uh, I wanted to just make sure that everybody in the room understands the outcome of this meeting is to make sure that all of the elected officials in the room are aware that we have a manpower shortage, and that's why I brought you guys together to discuss. And I appreciate all the time you've done.
If you can, we appreciate your leadership, we appreciate all of you. Either you oughta talk to Adam before you leave, if you're elected leader, because he wants to talk to you and.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, I'll pick, I, we stand adjourned, thank you.